Good morning, we'll call the meeting to order for the day. First item on our agenda is approval of the day's agenda.
Will you approve? Thank you.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion carries. Citizens to be heard, saying none, approved payment of bills and vouchers.
Move to approve, Mr. Chair.
Motion and a second to approve the payment of bills and vouchers, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion carries. Okay, approval of amendment to jail contract. Julie.
Good morning.
Today I'm requesting an amendment to our medical contract. We currently have a contract with Mend Correctional Care. Due to the increase of our inmate population, they feel it's necessary as well as we do to add additional staff to our medical. This staff person will be, won't be a nurse, but it'd be a health tech. They'll be able to coordinate paperwork, set medications, correspond with doctors, and help coordinate all the inmates we have out of county. Even though they're in another jail and getting medical services there, we are still responsible for coordinating care when they come back to and from, and following up with anything that they need to have done. I did have the county attorney's office look over the amendments, and they had some minor changes that they requested, those were made, and they have approved the contract verbiage. There is a cost impact, of course, associated with this. This share will cost us an additional $4,300. We want this person to start December 1st, and then in 2016, we're looking at $52,440.
Questions for Julie on this?
There's no option.
There really is no option with the numbers inmates we're having. When we did this contract, we had an average daily population of both in the jail and out of the county of eighty-eight. Today, for example, we're at one hundred and thirty-eight. The last three months, we've averaged one hundred and twenty-four. So our numbers are significantly higher, and they're not going down.
I think we'll be discussing the jail issue a little later from our meetings yesterday, but this is exactly what's going on and what we're dealing with when we're looking at why we have to have a new jail in Clay County. And I think you said yesterday that the population was the highest we've ever had, which was one hundred and forty-eight prisoners we were dealing with, so pretty amazing. So, Kevin?
This was not in the new requests in the original budget?
No, it wasn't. When I did the 2016 budget, our numbers are still under thirty.
I understand that there's been an escalation since-
It's an explosion since I did my budget.
Since you started your preparing that in June or whenever you were doing that. But I understand that. I just wanted to make sure that we know that we're gonna have to come up with another fifty-some thousand between now and December.
There'll be a lot more with boarding costs for next year that we didn't have budgeted as well, so.
I'm gonna have to revise that upward?
Considerably.
Okay. Can you give us an increased estimate on that?
I can.
At some point soon?
I can, yes, I can.
Okay, 'cause we're gonna need to-
We're gonna have to deal with it, so.
As far as contracting out, is this something, we need two people or something? Do we need to contract out? I know the medical staff is tough to get a hold of. I mean, is this someone that we should be hiring, or?
We don't hire them. Our contract with Mend will hire the person. They'll provide the health tech person for us. We don't have to advertise it's not a Clay County employee, it's a Mend employee.
So that's cheaper to go that way than us hiring it, or?
Yes. We don't wanna take on the medical again like we have in the past.
We just, when did we switch that? It wasn't that-
Twenty-fourteen.
Yeah, it wasn't that long ago that we switched from providing that, and-
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
A motion and a second.
Mr. Chair.
Yes?
I apologize for coming in late, but if I could, just on formatting on this contract, Julie and I had had some correspondence back and forth. I am concerned about at least the way, just the way that it's written and numbered. If the person compares the proposed contract to the master contract, it could be, it has a couple ambiguities. It could be interpreted as replacing the medical director just by the way it's formatted. And then the payment section really should be made to amend the payment section, not this first section where the services and the duties are laid out. So, I mean, I have no opinion on the overall issue, but the formatting of the contract I do have concerns about because, primarily because it could appear to replace the medical director, and I know that's not the intention.
We did make those changes that you requested.
Okay, they didn't appear in the board packet at least.
The one we sent over was the latest revisions.
Well, before we vote, let's make sure they're in there, so.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I think maybe to move things along, you know, if it would be okay for Frank to include in his motion that it's subject to, language subject to attorney approval, then I think that would cover it.
Okay.
Would that work?
That's okay with me.
Okay.
So Frank, is that okay with your motion? That's good with my second.
It's okay.
That's a good solution. Any further discussion on the matter? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion carries. Thanks, Julie.
Thank you.
Family Service Center, Georgia. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm requesting two actions. I'm requesting to purchase four additional fleet vehicles. Three will be replacements, and then I'm also asking in a separate motion to dispose of three of the existing vehicles. One of the additional vehicles will be to, currently with the social service transports, there's a need for them to use a vehicle more on a regular scheduled basis, so we're looking to increase the fleet by one so we can accommodate their usage requests.
Questions for Georgia?
First, purchase four fleet vehicles, first item on the agenda.
It'll be the lease, not the purchase.
The lease, pardon me, the lease of four fleet vehicles.
I'll second them, but I do have a couple questions.
Go ahead.
What is the cost savings for us to lease versus purchase?
In some cases, it's very similar. The benefit that we have is we're on a replacement plan that we're able to fund them through the thirty-five cents per mile, where the purchase, it's the lump sum. So the cost is very similar to lease versus the-
Jenny, we actually just changed that process here, I think it was two years ago that we started this.
I'm familiar with that because of another board that I serve on, so it's a good option.
The thirty-five cents a mile, thirty-five cents a mile that we charge, you're saying you charge at each department, so it's just taking out of one department and putting it into another department as far as the county, it really doesn't make any difference. We just take it out of one account, put it into another account? Is that how that works?
Yes.
So, are we making, I guess, I'm trying to see, are we making money on the thing, or is this, we're not really making any money because we charge one department so much money?
Just the way a man can.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I think ultimately what it does is it just puts the expense to the property department.
Oh, I realize, yeah.
You know, but we're not, we're not overcharging a department, or try not to undercharge either, you know, so it's just a matter of, it's a good average and simple way to, for each department to budget their travel expenses as well.
Yeah, I was just wondering where the thirty-five cents came in. I know our mileage is fifty-seven, but that's what we use, our vehicles, I mean, but this is a lease vehicle. I was just seeing, it is just changing from one department to the other, but really, it's not cost the county anymore unless they're one person's budget.
Okay, Jenny?
If we move to do this, what percentage of our vehicles left over will be owned versus leased?
We will have a total, there's eleven, not all the vehicles are in the fleet, so they're part of the fleet, but some are specifically assigned to a department. It'll be about half, a little over half.
So this is the general turnover in order for us to get to that point of all right?
Right.
And Georgia, this falls in line with our proposed budgets that we've set for the year?
Correct.
Brian, you had something?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, one thing that Georgia and I discussed too, and Rhonda, with the small amount of fleet vehicles that Georgia manages, along with enterprise comes a document or the software to manage the vehicles and keep track of every cent that's put into them. So we feel it manages the costs better as well, and that would, we could do that internally, but it would require more staff time and things, so we feel that is an added bonus to the leased vehicles, is the management part of it.
Okay, any further discussion? I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Both same side, motion carries.
We need another motion to dispose of the vehicle?
Right.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion on that issue? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Both same side, motion carries. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, request to replace systems administrator, Tim Dent. Good morning, Tim.
Good morning. Well, I'm here looking for approval to replace a soon-to-be vacated position. One of our systems administrators are, his last day will be the day after Thanksgiving.
Any questions for Tim on this matter?
I'll move to approve the request.
Second.
Any further discussion? Am I making that easy on him this morning?
It's a critical position, isn't it?
It's a very critical position, and yeah, we need to fill it as soon as possible.
All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion carries.
You don't have a motion to backfill at all?
Yes.
Would you possibly?
Part of the motion.
My motion with a backfill option as well?
Fine.
That's good, okay. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Both same side, motion carries. You're good to go. Thanks. Okay, approval of memorandum of understanding with the City of Glendon. Dave Overbow is not here yet, so we all do some committee reports. Wayne, go ahead.
On Wednesday, November 4th, Clay County Collaborative Governments Board Meeting, General Business, there was a report from Jane Patrick on what is called a local collaborative time study. This report goes to the state and influences the vast majority of funding that comes from the state to the collaborative. We review, had a review of the final 2015 fiscal year budget. We went over and reviewed the 2016 fiscal budget, reviewed the Department of Human Services' collaborative report that is sent on to the state, and then we had the coordinator's report from Carolyn Sternad. And also on Wednesday, November 4th, Moore Planning Commission, General Business, approved a final plat of the Sweeney subdivision of sixty-three acres on the northeast quadrant of Fortieth Street and Seventieth Avenue North. We approved the rezoning of the Holley Development Company of lots one through three of block one of community crossings, addition to residential moderate density. And these items will go, now be sent to the city council for approval. On Thursday, November 5th, the Local Advisory Council for Children's Mental Health, General Business, update on the newly created Children's Mental Health Network, and this includes Clay, Becker, Wilkens, and Otter Tail Counties, and also the White Earth Indian Reservation. And not only that, they're all, nearly all of the school districts in the four counties are also part of it. Agency reports from Clay County Public Health, Clay County Social Services, Rethink Mental Health, Prairie St. John's, Clay County Collaborative, what's called Freedom Resource, and then also an update from the Clay County Juvenile Detention Center. And that's what I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Frank?
Tuesday, with Highway Tracking, we did some more fine tuning on the building that we planned on putting out there in the landfill site. They did a few more changes in the drawings. Talked about the finances, how it's gonna be shared, and also talked about that four township meeting we held back in October 27th. Also talked about the fuel tanks on site at the place, and we all, other discussion was helped about fuel tanks at the highway shop in South Moorhead there, whether we could put some tanks there. Other than that, we talked about rotary mower replacement schedule, we're looking from going from a four-year schedule to a three-year schedule. It would save, figure out $2,000 or $3,000 a year on that, so looking at going from four years to three years. Yesterday, I went to the MRCC ITV thing we had here, pretty much covered the memorandum of understanding with MRCC, with AMC, they're looking at making AMC, no, MRCC a part of AMC, if we wanna do that. They're looking at going into a memorandum of understanding, going together, making that a part of, even though we only represent twenty-nine, MRCC only represents twenty-nine counties, they're looking at being part of AMC. Lot of things have been worked over there yet. They're looking at the number of delegates, that the MRC with twenty-nine counties, there's twenty-nine delegates, they're looking at, is getting a little bit too big, you know, that, not the organization, but when they have their meetings, we need all those delegates there, one from each county, and they're looking at if that, going through districts or something like that, or whatever. The county size that belonged to the MRCC should be fifty-four thousand, and Clay County's grandfather then, along with, I think, Otter Tail County, I think, and a couple more grandfather then, and they're looking at, should this size, should it be bigger, should it be smaller? And then looking at the priority items that MRCC is gonna go through this year, pretty much gonna be website, broadband, buffer strips, transportation, and payment in lieu of taxes. That's it.
Thank you, Jenny.
Thank you. Last week, I had a few meetings. I have the Cascade Clay Food Systems Advisory Commission, and this is one that's had a lot of publicity lately. Part of what that commission does, we're working on a blueprint to evaluate each parts of urban agriculture, and then that blueprint then will be used to bring back to the different entities to use as a decision-making document for ordinances. And while public criticism can be great, I'm concerned that it may get hung up on chickens because it's far more than chickens, and there are good things happening with that, good discussions happening with that, and like I've said before, I would like to bring a ordinance proposal to the planning commission because I think that this board needs to be reactive to what, or proactive, it's not reactive, proactive to what the community may want on that. So, like I said, no actions have happened yet, but just good discussion. I also had the joint powers meeting last week with the cities and schools, and we worked on approving the modified membership list to include a representative from the counties as Oakport has come into Moorhead. We feel that it's important to add a little bit from the greater counties, and I appreciate that. We also talked about what we could do as a group to show our support to local public service workers, the fire, and the police departments. And what we decided is that the ninth of January, I believe, is Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, so we will work on press releases and a joint statement to wear blue on that day, followed by a fire appreciation day that would be in May. So we're working on that, and we're also working on our meeting that we usually have in January. And I also had some phone discussions, some personnel issues with lakes and prairies, and that will conclude.
Thank you. Kevin?
Okay, I too had the Highway Tracking meeting, and Frank covered that quite well, so I don't need to go over that. The Clay County Joint Powers, as Jenny just mentioned, the majority of our time was dealing with the intergovernmental retreat and the planning for it, and we do have a proposed agenda and panels set up, and that is gonna be on Friday, January 22nd. And we have a confirmed keynote speaker, Chris Myers, is the U.S. Attorney. So the morning session's gonna deal a lot with, you know, the newly graded street crimes unit, and, you know, the, it's pretty obvious that we're seeing an uptick in crimes being happening in our area, whether it's on this side of the river or on the Fargo side of the river, it's still significant to all of us, and so that's gonna be a good deal. In the afternoon, we're gonna, it's gonna be focused a lot on our capital improvement projects that we all have going on, whether it's the school districts, the city, or the Then we had, yesterday we had our jail planning committee meeting, and it was a long meeting and a very good meeting. We first got updates on the home bio issue that's going on, and that's going very, very well, better than we expected at this point in time. We received a report from the Mental Health Committee regarding recommendations on programming and those types of things, and we've gotten assurances from Klein-McCarthy that the facility itself will be designed to have the rooms necessary to handle those things, so that's, that was the important point for now, that we wanted to make sure that we covered. We did talk about some layout options, and with the recent increase that we're seeing, as was mentioned before the meeting this morning, yesterday was the highest number of bed counts that we've ever had here in Clay County. And we originally had, we're looking at potentially modifying already our original jail plans to have access to more pods sooner in the event that this, these numbers continue to escalate. But what we can report is that the whole design, the way we have it going, we actually have room to add, once we have a new LEC, we would have room to expand an additional one hundred and eighty beds into the long-term future, right within our site. So I, and Brian, maybe you can add more too, as our administrator on this, as we, in your report, but things are moving along. We talked a little bit about future financing, that's, and we spent a lot of time talking about timelines for when we need to have things. We are going to be sitting down with the City of Moorhead over the next few months to really get engaged on the LEC portion, because part of the requirement that we're gonna need for this increase, these increased pods, requires the need of the current LEC. And the plans, of course, have been to, you know, eventually take that down once the new LEC is done to make way for jail expansion. And we see that jail expansion possibly needing to come sooner rather than later, so the city manager was at our meeting, as well as a member of the Moorehead City Council, and they both agreed that these discussions need to happen soon, so we'll be working on that as well. There's plans in place to deal with the infrastructure needs that we're gonna have to happen. We're gonna make sure, there's gonna be some sewer issues here on Eighth Avenue that we're gonna have to address sooner than the rest for the actual jail facility itself. The other infrastructure changes in terms of underground are gonna deal primarily with Ninth Avenue, or Tenth, Ninth Avenue, and then Tenth Street down the road's gonna have to have some things done there. But those are, we are starting that process as well. And we've got other meetings set up, and it's gonna be a busy spring from now through May. We're gonna be, it's gonna be pretty active, and we'll probably have more detailed reports for the full board on a regular basis as these things move along. We're gonna have, I know Grant and I are gonna actually be working even on some secondary things constantly as we move on, and we'll keep you guys posted on that.
The, you didn't mention the property update either, did you?
Well, I mentioned, I think, I mentioned that it's going good, but maybe Brian can get into the specifics of it in his report, but it's, you know, in our, the committee has really decided that the best solution long-term will be for the LEC to be straight north of this facility. And so if you look straight out the window here for the odds, it would be just to the north of the courthouse. And we've had very good response from a significant number of those people on that block. In terms of immediate need, that's the block that we have more interest in for our plan, and that's going very well. And not to say that the other block isn't, that's doing well too. We actually have some properties closed on there too, but for future, that's really more gonna be to help alleviate parking issues. It'll also be good during construction to have some phasing areas for the construction work itself, so, and maybe Brian can get into this more.
Let us comment quickly. Because a large portion of our population now will have an increased tax because of the result of the vote last week, I just, I really think it's important to continue to stress to that board the importance of campaigning to, for some government dollars to help out with that project. I'm concerned about overtaxing our citizens, and I realize we've talked about this a lot, but it was all kind of a hypothetical talk if something were to happen, but because that referendum did pass, there's a significant more taxation that will happen, and we just need to continue to be conscious and fiscally responsible about that.
We had significant discussions on that, and we fully, between now and the legislative session, that is our primary focus of discussion, is the assistance from the state on that. There's other, there's other alternatives that we'll be talking about later, but for right now, we wanna focus on the, you're exactly right, we wanna focus on the importance of having that state. Regardless of the issue, we have to build a jail in Clay County.
Yeah.
So, but, okay.
Thank you.
Oh, I just wanted to make sure that, yes, that completes my report.
Okay, well, I had MRCC, Frank covered that, the jail meeting, Kevin covered that pretty well. I had a reentry and restorative justice meeting last week, and those programs are both going well. Of course, it's sort of the funding for following years is always the issue, and they're working diligently on that right now, trying to make sure that there's funding for those programs for the coming years, so. That was it for me. Dave, why don't you come up, we'll get you taken care of, and. Approval of memorandum of understanding with the City of Glendon for the 2018 Park Ave Reconstruction Project. Good morning.
Good morning. We have been working with the city on some of the preliminary things. We've got a pretty good scope. We, as I put in my packet here, we have applied for a transportation alternative grant in which we were awarded $375 on a joint grant for that, so we will use that for the sidewalk and the trail work up and down the project. And we did recently check, too, I'll share, if the trail prices and things come in a little less than that, we will, we would have been given permission to utilize the rest of money for street lighting. So just to maximize our grant, just to make sure we don't come a little under on it, so.
Just for the public, you- Just for the public, you had, you said $375?
Yep. Oh, $375,000, sorry.
Should I say that? Hey, good to meet you, Dave.
$375 wouldn't go very far. Might not even get one panel for that. I don't know if everybody's had a chance to look, but the MOU that we put together is almost identical to the ones that we use with the City of Moorhead when we did 11th Street out here, and the City of Barnesville down on their Front Street project. The biggest thing that I like looking at is on page three there, the cost share portion where it identifies the construction costs, the preliminary engineering costs, and the construction engineering fees. So, we got a pretty good breakdown. The city's been really good to work for, work with. They're very supportive of the project. They've got some water and sewer that they also need replaced at the same time. In addition, we'll be sharing a little bit on, on the sidewalks and the trail and the storm sewer as well. So, we're probably going to be utilizing their city engineering firm on the storm sewer, being that they kind of know how much water is going through the remainder of the city as it, most of the water comes from the east, and it kind of actually comes all the way through town, and then they don't have any, they don't actually have any storm sewer in Glendon. It's all open ditches and culverts through the driveways. So, this will, this will be, I think, a really nice improvement. We're going to have the first part of curb and gutter coming through town. It's going to really look nice when we're done. In addition, we'll have a 10-foot trail on one side and a five-foot sidewalk on the other side, getting all the children that are making their way to and from school and just people walking. Right now, they walk right down the road, on the side of the road, and there's school buses, and there's farm equipment and things coming through town, so it's going to be a very nice improvement. Really looking forward to this project, which is in 2018, by the way.
Okay. Any other questions for Dave on this?
Was there any discussion on the railroad, as far as the no sire, no horn?
Yeah, the Quiet Zone project, yeah. I have been working with them on that, too. And I think what's going to happen is, if I had to forecast, I think there's going to be some temporary measures put up in place because we don't want to put some permanent things up and then tear them up in 2018. So, I think what's going to happen is they'll put some temporary measures up that will satisfy the BNSF and the FRA as far as their quiet zone improvements that need to be done so they don't have to blow the whistle. And then in those permanent improvements will be added to this project. That's kind of how we're looking at for the future. So, and essentially, all it is, is that if, it's kind of like what they have in Dilworth, they got that curb and gutter, so if you're pulling up there, you can't go around the arm that comes down. And then there will be some gates, I believe, so you can't jump over the tracks as you go. There's some residents and some trailer parks and a bunch of children that come from kind of the west side of town. So, we're going to be, there's going to be a gate that comes along there, so you, it's kind of what Fargo has, so you can't get across there. And then I think they've also got, I can't remember the name of it, but there's like a little maze that comes on there. They're going to have some of those, that little gating and fencing right where the sidewalk crosses the tracks to. And what it does, it gets you to look down the tracks, and then you have to do a U-turn and look the other direction. So, I believe those are the three improvements that I'm aware of, and it's only going to be on Park Street and then the next street to the east.
Okay.
And will be incorporated in the project, and at this time, I guess, I think it's going to be 100% city share, as they're the one benefiting from the no whistles coming through town.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks. One of the motions?
I'll make the motion to approve this, Mr. Chair. Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signed by by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Dave.
Yep, thanks.
Okay. Approve, approval of voting delegates for MCIT Annual Meeting. Brian?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess that's pretty straightforward. You have a document in front of you that asks you for the delegate and the alternate, and currently it's you, Mr. Chair, and then Commissioner Gross is the alternate, and what we would like to see is a motion, if you would like that to stay that way, for MCIT.
You're both going to be there? I believe that it remains the same.
I'll second the motion.
Motion and a second. All in favor, signed by by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay. You want to do your committee report, Brian?
Oh, okay, sure. Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. Most important things first, thank you for the privilege of taking a few days vacation last week. That was much appreciated. I know I missed last board meeting, and, and I do appreciate having the liberty to take a few days vacation. Enjoyed it. The, we had a meeting yesterday morning with Kathy McKay, Director of Public Health, and Darren, HR Director, and then KFGO did a little blurb on it yesterday afternoon, or I guess maybe it was still morning, but anyway, in reference to a couple of the positions that you have approved to fill over in detox, we have now gone three months, if you remember right. Don Nelson was our lead RN there, and he passed away 03, three and a half months ago. They have not been able to fill that position. You also authorized the fact that the Director of Detox is moving to a home nursing position, and that change was supposed to take place November 1st, and that hasn't taken place either, and we're getting no applications for that. And I don't know if you're aware of it or not, but also, Fergus Falls is the closest detox center, and there is talk of them closing down. In fact, that's, that's, was their tentative decision, was to close down their detox center at the end of the year because they're having staffing problems and their director is, is leaving. It's not a real desirable work environment. There are people that do want to work in that environment because they, they feel a real calling to that, that need, but the, the issue being, between here, the next detox center, medical detox center, would be Wilmer, Minnesota, and that's a long drive. Otherwise, some cases go to the hospitals for much more expensive care. So, we need to fill those positions, and we met for about an hour, hour and a half yesterday morning, and to talk strategies about how do we recruit someone for these positions, and I think we have some good ideas. One thing that keeps coming up is the pay, the pay, the pay, and, and when you're looking at a 24-hour service and in that environment, we may have to consider that. And what I told Kathy is that I would bring this up to you folks this morning to tell you that we are working diligently to try to get the word out. We'll do some more aggressive style recruiting, more aggressively to the colleges that are training these people, reach out to people that we know that have some contacts in regards to it, maybe get it out on the radio again, and do some things like that to, to do a better job of, we feel, or I feel the people are out there, we just need to find them. And then we will, may have to come to you for some consideration of wages. Maybe we have to contract for a year. Maybe we have to train one in, and, and we try to contract with a, with a facility to oversee the facility. But we'll get it done, but it's, it'll take some effort to do so. The jail committee has, we met yesterday afternoon. We hadn't met since you folks approved the contract for the architect. So, the, I think the Behavioral Health Committee had met two, three times, and one of the topics, as was Commissioner Campbell talked about, was the reports from the different entities, and one was the Mental Health Committee, and the six suggestions that they made to, and it was discussed in depth, the facilities and the counseling rooms and the, and the rooms. So, they're taking it, I think the jail committee, the whole jail committee is taking it to heart, what the Mental Health Subcommittee is, is suggesting. And so, that went really well. On the expansion of the pods, yeah, the, the, I believe Commissioner Campbell said 180, or, yeah, it'd be 180 additional, but it was, it's 120. The two pods are 60 pods apiece, but I think we could look at a third pod as well.
Designed for three, then?
Well, it's designed for two, but there would be room for three.
There's three, then?
Well, yeah, I think you're both right.
Okay.
Because he showed, I mean, the one, I think it's being designed for two, but they show one that has room for three.
That has room for three, absolutely.
The one, yeah, there was, one of the diagrams showed three, room for three pods, so.
Yeah, so, but, but I think the tentative plan are the two pods that, that hold, they're double-deckered at, at 30 apiece, so that would be 120 to, to be phased in, and then room for the extra one. So, that's, that's, that's a lot, and it's going extremely well. On the, on the housing units, I think we have 15 purchase agreements out there. We've closed on probably seven or eight of those, so it's going really well. Because we'll need to be starting to look at, at something next fall there for parking and staging and different things when we, we start construction of the jail. And yes, there was a strong agreement to continue discussion of a law enforcement center and how that would fit in under that space, and getting the two governing bodies to gather on that and moving, moving down the road. So, very, very positive movement on that. I had a discussion with Steve in reference to the Arts Trail, the Agucy Recreational Trail. That is pretty well completed, but as with anything that's been in existence that long, there was a little spur of a trail up in, in Polk County that was purchased or acquired, I'll say, by the, by the trail, by the Arts Trail, and Steve reviewed that and the history of it, and will be bringing it to the board at a future date for a quick claim deed to, from you guys, just turning your ownership of it over to, to Polk County. So, he'll discuss more of that, but, when he brings it to the board, but we had a meeting in regards to that. So, it's kind of funny, some of these things are, they're never quite complete. It seems like there's always a little bit of filtering in here. The, I had a meeting with, with Joe Obaki, and I don't know if you remember his name, but he may be coming to the board, and he's with Solutions Alternative in regards to the, the behavioral issues that was brought to you some time ago, or a couple of weeks back, in some housing units. And, and we thought it would be good if he presents his program and what they do for the county, and, and I think that'd be a real positive thing. Just some real positive news, last, yesterday afternoon, I got a call from Judy Anderson, and, and that is a hardship case that was in Clay County to the southern part of the county, and you folks authorized a letter going to DNR because of the hardship case, and I'm just very pleased to say that that has worked out with the authority, and she informed me yesterday that they have kind of a closing in it, and it's, it's not a purchase of the, but it's an option to purchase the property, which is going forward. So, they will be able to move out of their property in the middle of the month, and that's really good news for them, so. I think it's important that you know that. I have a, just received it this morning, and we can certainly duplicate it, but unless you want to take care of it today, it's, it's a voting membership for Lakes Country Service Cooperative, and you, five elected people will be the ones voting for it, and there's two candidates on there, and you're supposed to vote for two candidates, and, and one is Commissioner Hipsh, Doug Hipsh, from down at, at Otter Tail County for the Lakes Country Service Cooperative, and the other one is Hal Leland, who is the mayor of, of Fergus Falls for that. So, if you want to sign those before you leave, if you want to, we'll put them in your mailbox, and you can deal with them later, too. Just came in this morning. We just want to clear it up. And then I'll be sending out a little bit of information to you. I've been kind of reviewing, frankly, for the last couple of years of how our management team is structured, and it's something that was put together by the county board 20-some years ago. The last change on it was 19 years ago, and there's, positions have changed, and duties have changed, and, and structures have changed, and I'm just going to recommend a little slight change to you folks on that, but I'll be sending some information out on, to you on that, so. And with that, Mr. Chair, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Anything else?
Do we need a motion? Can we do the motion to approve those elections?
No, I don't think so. I think you as elective officials can just vote individually. There's five forms that they want you to send in, so.
Kenny?
I do have one comment. I want to congratulate the Clay County Historical Society for hosting Al Roker last night. I know that a lot of preparation went in on their part, and just want to congratulate them.
Good. Anything else? Anything from the county adjourners about this, Ross?
No.
Okay.